...TV.
Mr. Chair, this is the one meeting that I opened the meeting and asked for nomination for Chair as to the reorganization of the school committee. So I would ask for a nomination for Chair of the school committee.
I move the nomination of Anna Mae O'Shea, Anna Mae Brook.
O'Shea.
O'Shea Brook. Let me try to read it. I move Anna Mae's nomination for Chair.
Motion by Chris, second by Leo, we discuss it. Harry, now to vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Have a chair.
Thank you. Alrighty, thank you very much. And I would like to nominate Jess Riley for Vice Chair.
If I may, Madam Chair, it's probably more appropriate for the members to nominate than the Chair, so I'll move the nomination Jess Riley for Vice Chair.
Second.
I second.
Okay, thank you. All people in the room, if you have a way.
Aye.
May I give suggestions?
You may, but I'm going to move the nomination of Leo Bram for Financial Secretary.
Thank you, I was going to suggest that.
Second.
I second. You're saving my mind, I'll let you. All in favor?
Aye. That's mostly because I don't want to read the warrants anymore.
But that position is the perfect position for you.
I loved reading warrants, I'm sad.
That's how you learn the ropes in Seagull, I suspect, so I'm glad you're doing that. It's a good, it's a good one. Alright, who we've got?
Marble coolers and teps off this.
Right, right, donuts every day.
I'll move, what is it, the Recording Secretary? I'll move Chris Morrison for Recording Secretary.
Second.
We've got, um...
You gotta call all around that area. Summer vacation still a little bit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I forgot we had that. I think that's an appointment that you make.
I'm nominating Jess.
Because appointment, you just make it.
Alright, Jess, you're nominated.
Thank you.
Right, wonderful, moving on. Thank you very much. I want to take this opportunity to open up the floor if there are items for public input regarding school business not on the agenda. Yes?
Jerry Potts, 7th and Curve Street, welcome back to this beautiful, warm library. Actually, this is air-conditioned, so. Just two quick items. So one of the things that I think in a few of the previous meetings I've gotten up is there exhibits and documents as part of the minutes, and I've requested a couple of times that those be posted along with the minutes, and we've, everyone agrees it should be done, it's how the selectmen and everyone else are doing it. So I would just ask again for any of the minutes, any of the documents that are referenced, if those could also be uploaded as part of it, if they're referenced in it, and that'd be great. The second thing I just wanted to mention is I know the town stepped up big, and it was well-deserved for the school committee and the school, and for the kids on the budget from last year. One of the items which I supported were the cameras, and I understand the need for those in security. I do, would like to suggest, at least for consideration, and maybe it's on the docket over the next couple of months, for there to be a discussion around privacy, what the actual policies are around how the cameras are used and that information, and also the same, I know all of the students rightfully, I work in corporate America, and there is a policy that comes home on the appropriate use of digital, you know, anything that's related. But I would also ask that the school committee consider the privacy of the students, if there is any disclosure of information to third parties, that that, you know, whether it's Google or someone else, there are just more and more concerns with privacy going on right now in the world, and I totally understand why the students have to abide by that, but I'd also suggest that the school committee consider coming up with a public policy on, you know, how that data's going to be used around the students and also in the cameras. So, for consideration for future, thanks.
Jerry, were you tying those together, the cameras and the digital policy? I'm trying to understand.
General privacy, yes. You know, I think they can be handled, actually, to whatever you guys think is the best way. I know that Newton has a policy that they have documented, and, you know, I just think it's good for the students also to know, it's a two-way street as they go out into the world.
I guess I'm still struggling with, at one point we talked about Google, and one time we talked about cameras.
Yeah, is the information, is it stated anywhere how the cameras are going to be used, that information, who it's shared with, under what circumstances it's shared? So that's one distinct, and then secondly, around digital, any of the students' information, is any of that information made available to the public? And if, you know, just stated policies on it and...
Student data privacy?
Yep. They are two distinct things.
Yeah. Alright, I thought you were putting them together.
Well, privacy and how information is shared. Thanks.
Hello, everybody. I'm Linda Salisbury, 57 Colonial Road. You might remember last year I spoke to the school committee and Dr. Marsden a couple of times, representing the theater parents of the high school theater program, and interested in just raising awareness about compensation, and we were really grateful that you, you know, listened to our concerns and allowed us to give input to the stipends and the new union contract. I have a question more than anything, and that is, when will that contract be made publicly available? It's my understanding it went into effect a few days ago, and so we're wondering when.
The school committee, the teachers associations, the sign as well, will be available.
Awesome. Do you have any sense what the date is, like the timeframe of that?
Next week, next week.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, we move to the approval of the June 4th minutes.
Madam Chair, I was absent for that meeting, I haven't had a chance yet to look at the video to review the minutes that we tabled.
All right, new business. We've got meeting guidelines and procedures. Jess, would you like to...
Sure. So this summer, and actually being a new kind of committee member, and thinking about how meetings go, what our policies are around these meetings, and how public input works, I spent a lot of time thinking about how it is that we can make our school committee meetings the business meetings that they are, which is the only time that we, as a group, are able to come together as a body and discuss and understand ideas, and also have more effective public input per agenda item. Because I think that, you know, we end up having a lot of stacked public input at the very beginning, and it kind of goes on, and people are expressing their ideas, and it's wonderful, but then to actually be able to apply those ideas when we are thinking about the issue at hand, a lot of the time, last year, all of a sudden it became this, like, you know, audience members are, and public members are kind of giving us input from out there, and then we're kind of out of order, and so I was trying to really think about how we may be able to kind of systemically have more efficient and more kind of studied and understood input with also, without also wasting all of your time waiting for what's going to happen. So I went back to our policies, which are a wonderful thing to have, and I reviewed kind of how our policies up to this point are kind of written out, and it looks like, and one of the other things that I just really want to mention is that frequently people will come to school committee meetings, those of you who have not made here eight thousand times, and they'd say, "What do I do? How do I approach? How do I talk?" And I really want to make sure that people know what a school committee meeting looks like, how they proceed, and feel like they can be a part of it. So I went through our policies, and I basically just made a summation of what those policies are, what a school committee meeting looks like, kind of just walking through and providing information about what that is, and when it's appropriate to give input, and where it's appropriate to give input, quite literally, and we, you know, we do need to use the podium so that it can be recorded, these are public meetings, open meetings. So I actually brought a few copies of this, not a million, but I would like to have these available to the public when they come in, and I will pass them out to, I have about ten copies, and there are more of us than predicted, so I'll hand out a couple of copies to the audience as well tonight. But, one side is literally, I mean, this is just informational, and it's guidance, and there's nothing in here that's not been a policy before, but it's just kind of clarifying how we do things. So one thing is general guidelines for attendance? Yes, please. And then... You want to give, Jess, or you want to give your things? It's down to you guys, and I'll obviously... And then the other side is really just how a meeting happens. So there's the guidelines around how and when you can give input, and then literally what a meeting could conceivably look like, a regular meeting. I mean, there are different kinds of meetings, there are special meetings, but they generally run around the same kind of procedure. So, would you guys like to take a look? And, can I get a couple more? Do you have, or can you share?
I can share.
Share, share amongst yourselves.
Bonnie?
Sure. And, you know, I'm certainly welcome to any feedback, these are pretty much specifically taken from the policies, and that, looking at it, it's we give time after each agenda item within the old and new business for public input, so that people can then, you know, after they've been thinking about what we're talking about, you can actually speak to it instead of trying to ask for clarification, or hoping that you knew what happened after the meeting, whatever, so. Thank you for your time. Does anybody have questions specifically about this, or, I, of course, would leave it up to the Chair to ask for public input after the discussion is closed, but I do ask my other committee members what your thoughts are.
Maybe it's important to have input on it the next meeting, but as I, you know, as I look at it, and I have the UD Chair meeting ahead of time, Jess, I think this is consistent with all of our guidelines. We have had a spot on, I think my entire time on the committee, on the agenda for public input, we moved it at one point from the bottom of the agenda to the top, and tried to give up people an opportunity to make the meeting as efficient as possible, say I see on the agenda for now you have X or Y, and certainly we've never been aboard this, you know, said we don't want input on anything while we're discussing it, except in circumstances where we're talking about some kind of personnel matter, which we generally don't do in public anyways, so. But I do think last year in particular, we had a renewed interest in attending school committee meetings. Hopefully our ratings stay high this year, I mean, our TV ratings, not our personal personality ratings. And, you know, I think it's a good reminder of those younger parents who we want, or parents of younger kids anyway, who we want to start being more engaged, we need to sort of be in place, most of us, well, some of us have kids who are in high school and won't be here forever, so it'd be good to have, you know, another generation ready to...
Right.
I know when I first ran for school committee, I attended six meetings, and every one, it was me and the union group, and that was it, so. We've gotten better.
To some extent. One of the other things I realized is that we are not going into a period of time in which there are fewer decisions to be made, right? We're really thinking about how we progress through Medfield 2021, how we're kind of achieving those goals, what is happening with our physical plan, how we're thinking about the new, the new Dale Street project. And so, the more we can get really constructive input and have a dialogue that doesn't feel like just a lot of information coming at us, and being able to discuss, and being able to discuss with the audience, I think would be most helpful, certainly to my line, so. That is it, thank you so very much.
Ms. Jess.
Thank you very much, I thought this was a great suggestion, anyone else have anything else to say?
And I just, thank you. I had a number of times it brought up, votes were only taking, when votes were taking place, there wasn't an opening for public participation, it was a change, and a couple of times I read the policy saying, "If you're voting, you're supposed to ask for public input," and that wasn't always false, this is one, thank you for doing it.
Sure. You know, I think that as, as we kind of work as a group, and as we're trying to make decisions on the fly, and there's always so much, sometimes we just all need a reminder around what we can do.
It's very helpful for, as you say, movies coming to the piece as well, so thank you. Alrighty, staffing update?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet, you have the most recent staffing update, which lists the teachers, folks that were leaving, and the reasons why they're leaving the position. So we have twenty new staff folks, seven are new teachers, five weren't leave of absence, five resignation, and three retirements. So we've had a really good couple of weeks with our new staff, doing induction, Nat Vaughn has done a great job, Susan Baikoff overseeing the whole induction program and the mentoring. Our teachers came in a couple of days before school started, had a full day, two full days actually, and one half-day with their mentors, so it's been really positive, keep us excited to be here, as I had sent an email that although it's awful warm in the classrooms, definitely a lot of positive energy in the district, so we'll have people at that. Any questions?
Is this, is this all the turnover we had in the course of the year?
Yep.
We only had twenty teachers, twenty positions changed, I mean, usually this list is two or three pages long.
Yep.
That's remarkable.
So, two others that we want to just include, Dr. Chris Martis, who was here last year as interim, who was superintendent in the nineties, will be coming back just to help out with the director of composition two days a week. He's going to be here on Tuesdays and Thursdays, working with folks, he's going to compete with principals tomorrow, he's actually starting on Wednesday this week, but looking forward to him, I mean, he's a great resource to have in district, and a lot of experience, and he's going to be working with our staff as well. And then, of course, Mary Brule, who was our new director of student services, who was really hit the ground running on July 1st, done a wonderful job for us, getting a lot of positive feedback from parents, and that's a good sign too, and also from teachers, so Mary's been a great addition to the team, and things go really well in that department, so please have her...
People had asked about the director of teaching and learning position, so I'm guessing that position has been decided to not post, or?
So we're just, I mean, I think the timing of it, no one's looking for a job at that point after the vote of telling me it was fully laid for a central position. So we felt like it would be good if we could farm out some of the responsibilities of Nat doing the mentoring and that type of thing, Michael and I taking on some of the other professional development piece, and then Chris doing some of personal instruction, and we'll make it work, and then we'll look at doing something like winter or spring.
And the director, wasn't there an assistant director of technology position, that's something that was on that list at one point? I thought it was a tech position.
It was a tech, it was an IT position, but that was on the town side.
Oh.
Yep.
Because it's shared service, that was their position thing.
You don't want to meet Mary when she's dead, when she's got her paperwork.
Next week.
Okay, good, that'd be wonderful to just...
Is there an update on the facilities position?
Yes, so, as you know, Jerry, we talked about this earlier, Jerry went back to Weston, where they, he left Weston to come here, they hired three people to replace him, and they noticed that they needed to get him back, so they got him back for some major projects the next three years.
Are those three people available?
I'm sorry?
Are those three people available?
They could be, I think they're just, I think Jerry's just doing projects now, so he's not doing any supervision of buildings or facilities right now, so. So, we have, we put it up in July, I think in July 19th we posted that position, and we got twelve folks that have applied for it. We have someone that we are going to offer the position to, a wealth of experience doing project management, facilities management, in the private sector. Both the town and Michael and I interviewed this person, and we're looking to hopefully hire him by the end of the week, but he would have to leave where he is now, give him time, but Michael has always done a great job picking up slack there, and of course Wayne on the town side helping us out as well, so. But that's who we are, I mean, we're looking for someone with that project still like Jerry had, right, so that we have, we have Dale Street coming up, so someone that can look at that and help us along with that. This particular person was the project manager of Patriots Place, so I think he's, little project over there at Foxborough, so he's got some really good management experience, I think would be a great addition to our staff.
And that's a joint appointment that you make with the town?
The town.
Comments on staffing? Enrollment process?
So also in your packet was our up-to-date enrollment in class sizes, this was obviously something that we were focused on during the budget season, to make sure our elementary classrooms had appropriate levels, so if you look at what I gave you, kindergarten, we have five full-day classes with twenty-two, one full-day class with twenty, another full-day class with twenty. Again, that's the twenty, the two twenties, movement in and out, where certainly some folks decide that they don't want to do a full-day kindergarten when they move out of town. We have sixteen in the AM and fifteen in the PM. Our first grade classrooms, we have seven classrooms of twenty-one and two of twenty. At Wheelock School, our second grade classroom, we have seven classrooms of twenty students, two classrooms of twenty-one, one classroom of nineteen. Also, at Wheelock, grade three, we have six classrooms of twenty-two and three classrooms of twenty-three. Over at Dale Street, in fourth grade, six classrooms of twenty-one, two classrooms of twenty, and one classroom of twenty-two. In fifth grade, we have eight classrooms of twenty-one and one classroom of twenty. So you can see the difference from last year, where we were looking at first grade with twenty-four, twenty-five kids in a class. So they, certainly the support the town gave us allowed us to hire some great new teachers, and to bring those class sizes down considerably, connected this school this year, so it's been great.
Did we have any unexpected kids show up on the first day? Is this as of the first day, or?
It is, as of today. So we had forty-three students move in over the summer, fifteen at Memorial, eight at Wheelock, five at Dale, seven at Blake, and eight at the high school. The biggest group of kids came in first grade, seven of those came in first grade.
What was the net gain?
So we're at twenty-six thirty-one. So I have to look at last year.
I'd have to go back, I didn't carry my budget properly this year.
So as I say, twenty-six thirty-one.
And the final number doesn't have until October, right?
Right, October 1st. So it's certainly forty-three is a little bit easier to take than one oh four, so it allowed us to keep those class sizes down. Again, we don't have a lot of space to add many more classrooms at the elementary level, so the forty-three really helped us out. Any other questions on that? And I'll keep you updated as the year goes on, we typically get some kids in September that move, we typically, we allow parents, if you have a personal sales, that you can move in, and you can come to our school, even though you might live in Millis or whatever, we make sure that if you have a PNS, they can come, there's no sense in having kids doing too many transitions, so. But we do get, occasionally we get a few on the phone.
Someone building shop?
Michael, someone building shop? As always, our staff, and also outside vendors, we're very, very busy this year with the buildings, a lot of projects.
Thanks, Mike.
Just like Dr. Marsden said, I just want to thank our staff for getting all the schools ready, maintenance staff, and Dr. Sturtevant's staff, and Wayne from the school, from the town side, helped them when needed. So we had a lot of projects this year, camera project being one of them, but we tried to get them all done before school, and I think we were pretty successful. I'm just going to go through the projects, and then at the end, I'm going to break down the cost, depending on where the fundings came from. So, I'm going to start with district-wide. District-wide, we had a energy project, which was funded by a grant, we had a cost of forty thousand to do exterior lighting at all of the school's parking lots, so we're at about, I want to say seventy percent complete at this time. We still are working on, we finished up Moore, we finished up the Blake School, we finished up the high school, we're working on Wheelock, the Dale Street lights, actually, the property don't belong to the school, so that those are on the town side, but we're almost there. We also did heating and plumbing district-wide, and we also prepared for the heating system, getting the boilers ready. We have to shut those down, take them all apart, clean them, and then put them back together, and we have an outside company doing that, and we replaced a lot of internal lighting also. At Memorial School, we did a lot of tree work at Memorial School, and did the front of the school with the shrubs, we installed a magnetic fire door holder in the hallways that was missing, we rewired whiteboards, and we fixed back door power release on that back door. We also painted the canopy in the front entrance. At Wheelock, we had a repair on the elevator, we rewired classrooms for projectors, we did painting in the bathrooms, we rebuilt the air compressor for the heating system, maintained, we cut all the fence line back behind the fields, so the brush was kind of out towards the field, so we cut that all back, and we did maintenance on the boiler. At Dale Street, we rewired the data and power at Dale Street, again, we removed shrubs in the front of the building, we painted exterior entrances, fixed air compressor there, boiler repairs on that boiler, all the emergency lights were repaired and replaced, and the lights also, and we repaired certain windows that needed to be repaired at Dale Street. At the middle school, we worked on glazing the windows on the exterior, repaired a few of the exterior doors, we had a software upgrade for the HVAC system, that was also part of the energy management, excuse me, the energy grant, so we are at the process of programming that school right now, but it has a new EMS system at the middle school. We replaced the emergency lights interior, replaced ceiling tiles, worked on new kitchen equipment, and that was through an insurance claim that we had with the, during the winter. We hired an engineer to draw up plans and scope for the RFP, for the fire alarm system, and...
So just a word on that one, Michael, so you know I sent you the email last week, when we had the issue with the fire alarm due to the test, so that's been ongoing for many, many years, we've been working, my class is working with the fire department on that. The company came that day, reset it, tested it, it worked fine, the fire department has, they tested this morning again, it worked fine, we have a plan together, we're working to do a couple of things. We're going to have the fire department on a regular basis to test and reset, figure that hard reset is what's really the issue. And then, the other piece that is simplex is coming in to look at whether or not they can replace the board. So here's the dilemma that we're working with, is that if they replace the board, it's going to be five, six, seven thousand dollars, and then that whole board will be replaced again in a few months when they replace the whole system. There's no compatibility with the new system that we're installing in the current system that's in there. So we're working with the fire department, they've been great to work with. The other alternative that we have is hiring a fire watch during the school day, so that there's a firefighter there. So we're trying to, we're trying to get the best, the safest way for kids, but it's many, many layers, and the fire department's been very helpful for us, and, you know, so either one or the other, either going to bite the bullet and put that new motherboard in, or we're going to work with the fire department, have a fire watch, we need to... We need to do a cost analysis on that and also whether or not simplex can even replace it. Because the issue is, they've been chasing this now for a few years, and if we're replacing the whole board, then that's not it. And they can't guarantee it. So it's, it's, it's complex and frustrating because it works, and then it won't work, and then it works, then it won't work. So, I mean, just so you folks know, the, the fire alarm serves a few purposes. One is obviously the audible alarm and the strobe lights, but also to have a direct alarm the second it goes off, the fire, the fire station. That works, that has never not worked. It's the alarm only goes off for a few seconds and stops, and then the strobes go on and stop, or the strobes don't go on, the alarm goes off. It's just been constant, but the main alarm into the fire station, it'll always work, it's never gone down. So we're working with them on that, you know, Michael's been doing a good job on that. We'll see what goes.
So what does a fire watch, I mean, if you have somebody on site, what do they, what does that accomplish? That's something that's roaming the halls or?
Yeah, pretty much. We had to have one for the all night grab party this year.
I mean, the, the smoke detector works, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so yeah. So they're on the halls just to do, I just, I, like, what do they, what's their job when they're there?
It's like a police detail, but we have a fire watch, I mean, that's.
We did that for the sprinkler, when the, the sprinklers were damaged last.
Correct, we had a fire watch.
We needed to.
Right. So for instance, when the all night grab party took place, a new fire chief, so he came through, first time he'd seen it, saw all the paper and asked us to do a fire watch. So they can do, the fire chiefs can have a fire watch every month. But I know what you're saying.
Well, I guess, I mean, if the smoke detector works and, I mean, it's a matter of actually in the building, getting that word out. But it doesn't seem like that, that person accomplishes that, that role.
So anyway, long story, we're working on it.
And I know, I know this has been on our capital budget for several years.
It was denied, yeah.
Yeah, but is, what's this, what's the timeline? Remind me the timeline, so we.
It's a six-month project.
Okay, so we're looking at.
So it's going up to bid in October, and then once bids are done, it's six months from that point. So what they'll do is they'll do some of the work when the kids aren't there, but the bulk of the wire is to rewire the entire system again. That will happen over the summer months.
Okay, they can't do that over the vacation?
They, it, it, it's, I think it's like three months of actual work. They're there every single day to do it.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's, it's rewiring the entire system. Again, it's when you add, when you keep adding additions on, sometimes systems get overloaded, and that's what happens with this particular.
Jeff, what is the, what's the projected costs for the actual bids? Have you been?
Three hundred fifty thousand.
Three hundred fifty thousand dollars. All right.
Yeah.
A and chief, that's important.
Okay.
No, it's good that we've got money.
Yeah.
It's appropriate. Okay, so then we have the high school, where we did, we did tree removals and we cut branches down because we had to do the exterior lights. So that was, the gym floor was refinished. We did, we had to redo some of the circuits for power.
Was any of the gym floor covered by insurance?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
So we, we had electrician into, do some of the circuits in the building. We did roof repairs. We had to replace both the primary hot water heater that was, it was a brand-new heater, but it went. And then we had to replace also the second, which was the secondary hot water heater. So both of those were replaced this year because they both went at the same time.
So do we know why they both went at the same time?
Oh, one of them was an original, the secondary. The primary, it was the, they tried to change the board that was on it, the electrical board. But every time they were switching it out, it kept on burning out. So they said it was, there was a, the system, the take act had to come out, because it's all done now through technology. And they felt that it, they wouldn't be able to get it to work.
So was that warranty them or?
It wasn't, it was three years and, yeah, yeah. So.
You gotta check the box for the extended one.
Never pay for the extended warranty.
Use your ANX card.
So again, we repaired exterior doors. We did cameras on the outside of the building and inside of the building for the high school. There was, the elevator was repaired, server room, we're working with ventilation in the server room. We're still working on that project and replacing the gym seats. Those are due to come in hopefully within the next couple of weeks. And then there's a crew that's going to come in to.
So how many seats were replaced in the last couple of years?
We replaced two hundred, and we're replacing another hundred-ish.
So the original ones that were put in there were twelve-inch seats. So what we found in these twelve-inch seats is that when kids or anyone else stands up on them, they snap. So we're replacing them with ten-inch ones that don't have that overhang as much, and then we had no problem with them. So it's just kind of doing it a little bit at a time, because you can't do it a whole day.
Yes, yeah.
Sorry, a quick question about due to vandalism, these two, um, do we know who did it and do they pay for it?
Certain ones, yes, because of the cameras, so.
The most recent one, yes.
The most recent one, yes.
Where's Glacier?
For the second year row, we had someone want to practice here. And do donuts and do all that in cars. And both times we, of course, they did that.
Did they?
Their families have paid for that.
Yes. So I just wanted to go through the, I think this part is important. So from our operational budget, we are, we have spent a hundred and two thousand for these repairs. A hundred and ten thousand came from grants. Insurance claim was thirty-three thousand. Revolving account was twenty thousand. And then capital, there's thirty thousand here for capital, this doesn't include the hundred thousand for the cameras. So that, we managed all that within a two-month period.
I thought we had to do the work here some.
Yeah, I was just going to ask about that.
So that engineering, that RFP for the engineer is out. And now we're going to put the RFP for the actual work now.
So that is out. Do you have any idea about when that work might begin?
It's going to have to be done in the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Madam Chair, I ask for this to be on the agenda. I have a conflict on fifteen, you know, ask if we could move our October moves to twenty seconds.
Yeah, I wish so.
Objection here. Christine, can you, I know it's on the website, can you just email me the list of meetings for the rest of the year? Thank you.
Madeline, are you able to make twenty seconds? You're down there so quiet, I just wanted to make sure. You know, we, we know you're here. Thank you.
All right. Any other items? All right, old business, high school handbook.
So in your packet, you have the link to the high school revised high school handbook. I think that it was a committee of two teachers, two parents, and two students that worked with Mr. Spurling on this. They did a great job on this. I mean, they, they updated what they needed to in terms of the laws. We had our attorney review it. We had our attorney review it, I think, three or four years ago, and they just did it again this past spring. So they passed it through and also the school site council looked at it as well. So there, there are some changes in there. But I think the new format of having it all online allows us that as, as things change and as, with the policy or procedure changes, we can just automatically change that and update it as we need to.
So would there be a record of something, a policy change that is made, noted as you?
Yes.
Do I have to say?
Some of the things that we did in this was adding gender identity. So we had gender, but we didn't have gender identity in there, so we need to add that a couple of places. And I think looking at, you know, some of the procedures, academic procedures, homework, those kinds of things, all that has been updated in that group activity. Right, the rise program is now in there, all those things that are important that make up the high school and all they do.
Do we need to vote to approve the revised?
Yes.
Do we need to vote to, every time we revise it, do we, we need to? Minor revisions or replacements, we need to.
Yeah, I think we'll do it, you know, what, and I talked about it, we could do it every August meeting. And then we could look at the high school, middle school, and elementary ones as well, and just get on a cycle of doing that approval and rate.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it being online. I remember Karen Mount stacks for a while, so I appreciate that. I did get a chance to look at it, it's much, it's really accessible. I don't know, are parents required to sign off?
They are.
So it's quite possible.
That's electronic, oh, it's electronic, so we don't have to sign off.
I said. Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So next item, homework policy, in your packet was the homework policy version two point O. So this, if you remember, the original homework policy came out of the self-community of the SCL pass school. So that was parents, teachers, one administrator, and one student in there. So they put all that together, and then that went out to the staff as a draft, went to you folks as a draft. And then we got some feedback on, on some of the ideas and concepts that were in the homework policy. We reconvened a research and development group of teachers, it was like twelve teachers and a couple administrators over the summer. And they spent two days over the summer going through, picking it apart, and really trying to craft a policy that made sense for everyone. So I think what you have here, you know, I think it's a really well-done policy. It, it keeps the tenants of, of family time being important. It makes consistency across the mom of homework, it explains why that is. It's explicit on what homework should look like and what we should be assigning. And then the one piece that I think parents are really strong about in SCL, that is still here, is the work around homework on weekends, homework on holidays, homework on vacation weeks. So really spelling that out and giving all of us some guidelines of how we assign homework and how we're going to do that, so that family time is still important. You'll see the asterisk through there, I mean, that the one thing that does not, cannot follow this is advanced placement course, so they just can't. If we, if we were to put advanced placement courses on the same schedule, our kids would never finish. Because typically our kids, in Massachusetts, we start a little bit later, advanced placement schedule starts, you know, mid-August, so our kids are kind of behind the ball a little bit there. So if they were going to do something around this, it just wouldn't be. And I know we've had conversations, it's kind of what you sign up for, particularly in people's. But I think it's been, you know, really pared down in some areas that make sense. And then I really liked the roles and guidance for educators, students, and families. Thought that was a really neat way to say that as educators, our responsibility is this, as parents, this is our responsibility, as students, our responsibility. So it, it shows it's a partnership and it's not just homework for homework sake. And I think that's what we're trying to get away from with SCL, and we did a lot of conversation, and they did a lot of research on that. So what I have, and what you have in front of you.
I have a question about, you know, the, the educator, the student, the parents. So are this, when are the students going to be directed towards that policy? When are the parents going to be, is this going to be mailed out to them, or is this going to be embedded in all their handbooks? I'm just wondering about messaging.
Yes, yes to both. So I think, you know, that won't happen until you guys approve it.
Right.
So once you approve it as a policy, it doesn't have to be tonight, I think you probably want to take some time.
Yeah.
It's almost a revision of the first reading.
And I'd really love some input on the, the SCL homework committee as they put as much time into it.
Sure. It's not much different from what they did, but there's definitely some changes they should be able to.
Just as a courtesy, so they can see and give them feedback, that would be great.
So we would do something where, you know, we could send an email from you to parents as in the policy. And then we would do it back at the meetings and certainly students at the new high school level would be involved as well.
And then there are just a couple of comments. I liked, and it's, it's more compassionate than the student handbook in terms of when you miss homework, it's to immediately upon arrival at school, which.
Lee leaves.
Yes, but then if the homework policy is more compassionate in terms of you work with the teacher to develop a plan, which is the, you know. And I suppose one thing, and I don't think it's an issue anymore in students, I was wondering if so, but it says that the teacher should post homework in classrooms or online, wear a.
God bless you.
God bless, before the teacher's school day is over. Now, in the past, I've heard from various folks that sometimes homework is posted on a Sunday night, you know, at eight o'clock. And or, and I know that's not supposed to happen anymore, and I hope that's not happening anymore. But so I, it was just that I was stuck on those words, you know, before the teacher's school day is over. Is this a teacher staying at school until six o'clock writing papers and then posting homework? Or is this contract time, an hour after school, so then homework is posted by three o'clock or something or other? I just want, because that could lead, I don't know, I'm, I'm being very nitpicky and I'm normally not.
No, that's a good clarification.
But that kind of lingered on in terms of what's the expectation? You're ready to tuck in, have your dinner with your family on a Sunday night, and then you guys get an alert saying, oh, by the way, you've got next Monday teacher tomorrow?
Um, I feel like most teachers, I feel like will even post it before reading, so then you can work on it during reading. And then like, I feel like very rarely they'll post after three, and if they do, like, late at night, usually the next day, they're like, sorry, I didn't post till later on if you didn't get it done. That's fine, is that what you?
Yeah, I've actually had that happen to me a few times, if anybody is an alpine, I'm the director of the school committee, I've been in class. Last year that did happen a few times where it may not have been a Sunday night, but on a weekday at say six, seven PM, a new assignment was posted. I know this year, all of my teachers have been very clear, they all have classrooms, they've been very clear on where we can find it, and they've all been on top of it. And generally speaking, teachers do post, they tell you the homework in class. So I have an agenda, I make it write down in class. And then if not, it's also online, that's kind of a secondary thing. And I think that they've been very good about that this year.
Almost everyone writes an agenda, the homework, and then sometimes they'll post, they post the worksheets on classroom. But most people don't just like rely on classrooms, they'll write it down during class.
And if a teacher does post late homework, it's normally accompanied by an email saying, sorry, I pressed this during class, but there is this homework assignment, you can do it.
So pretty standard, the teachers are using Google Classroom to manage that communication back.
Yeah.
So if that could just be some feedback, in terms of defining that a little bit more, just, and I'm happy to hear that it's not happening as often as I've heard it had been happening. So just.
I would give you my interpretation is that it's one of the teacher's contract days.
I think that could just, just to avoid, because that could be very useful.
I think that was, sure, maybe that was the intent, that was, was that?
And then there was a section in the parent line item to encourage your children to self-advocate. And I think that is a wonderful thing, but sometimes it needs to be modeled a bit more with parents and teachers, especially at the high school level, where they really want you to self-advocate. Sometimes shyer students need a little help from their parents in terms of modeling of self-advocacy. You guys are superstars, so I know you can take care of yourselves, but there are some who just need a little bit more help, guidance. So that's just an, an example of mine. And I, 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 you know, interested in me saying, you know, parents need to model this. Or the expectation for freshman year, for example, to self-advocate, I just don't think it's there.
Well, I think the, the last bullet is pretty powerful too. Again, I know we had lots of conversations around this in SCL, assist students in making choices that promote a healthy home-school, active learning balance. You know, I think that's something that we're seeing at the elementary level as well, for the over-scheduled kids, you know, so that's, that's important, too.
Jeff, two, two points. One, the asterisk on that board of guidelines, it's hard to follow where that goes, and we should get it sort of right on the box, I think.
Sorry, Chris, what?
It's a matter of, if you see where it says homework time guidelines, there's an asterisk.
Yes.
You referred to the footnote.
Oh, it should be right below table.
Yeah, you can't find it.
It should be below table.
And then on the holiday section?
Yes.
The, the second goal point, that assignments won't be given, assessments may not be due, well, it's assessments may not be due, we're giving them. Okay, so you're not getting tested after school vacations or holidays, but you can give assignments the day after, right?
What's the policy again with the, like, how many tests you can have in one day? Is there?
That's a good question.
Yes, and that was another line, thank you, Maddie, for mentioning that. Because it said in the educator section, it alludes to coordinate dates when possible. You know, because I think some departments have master calendars that they plug into. because I think some departments have master calendars that they plug into. And I know in our SCL group, one of the teachers said, "I just wish everyone would use it," you know, "because if you've got, if you're in the state championships, and you've got, you know, some big test, and then also you've got a lab due," she said, "I think about that, I look at that, and I, you know, plan accordingly." So, thank you so much.
And I think we actually have to do a better job of that, but the thing is with the teachers, they don't know every kid's schedule in their classrooms, so it's kind of hard to figure out what tests to, so they can't figure that out. So I know what you're saying, and I think that we have to do better with that particular piece, like exam calendar, district, district or school-wide. But I think it's difficult for a high school, or definitely a high school teacher, because middle school are clustered. High school teacher know what class Peter's taking versus Maddie, and whatever.
Right, they would.
He wouldn't know.
But there are calendars.
Right, no doubt.
And there are, there's communication.
Well, there's general, there's also general times that tests and assessments will be done, to kind of pinpoint the current curriculum as you're progressing through the year.
Yeah, and I'm not saying, you know, to coddle, you know, it's just a global awareness of what's going on.
I think generally they die, each department will take a certain number of days, you know, like, it's a five-day cycle, six-day, five days. So day one would be one, day two, day three. So then they scatter, but they fall. And some of them have taken that as a way to unpack it. But that would be up to, you know, the high school.
It's a work in progress, it's not just a roll there of it.
While we're on the topic of homework, I personally think that homework has been, for me, very manageable throughout high school. I think the teachers have put down a very good job of giving meaningful, purposeful homework. The one thing that I've found to be the most stressful is when I will have a two-week period where there'll be very few exams, and then, say, before a long break, or before maybe a long weekend, there, I will have three, four tests on a day. And not necessarily tests, but also papers due. And I'm not sure if those are considered assessments on the calendar. But I think that they are either time-consuming and studying, if not more time-consuming. And so I think that, obviously, it's very difficult to balance and communicate between teachers. For example, last year, I took AP Statistics, and I was one of only two juniors in the class. And I think that a lot of my junior teachers would not know that there is a test that day. And I don't think it's necessarily, I don't know, on them to be considered just the two juniors in that class. But I think that having, like, a grade-wide or school-wide calendar with exams and also papers on it would be really helpful to just make sure that there's not three, four tests on one day.
Costly, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not like a scope and sequence, like, struggle, that perhaps the new director of teaching and learning.
Right. I think one of the things that we are concerned about with the guidelines around holidays is that projects and/or tests will get moved to before the holiday, before the vacation, not exactly what we're gonna set people up here. So that's one of the things that's definitely on our radar to watch out for. Is that we had a lot of conversation around, okay, this is great, but now let's just move everything to the beginning so that kids are stressed out to have five tests, two papers due, versus having to do after the vacation.
Comments up here?
Yes, please. You know, whether it's from, considering the policy also for athletics and game schedules and things like that. Midterms, I think, would probably be the one that's most manageable due to project. So, for example, my memory is so incorrect. My son, of course, occupied a game in the first quarter of the year. So he didn't want to skip the game because you can't skip games, right? But then, it was different. And I feel like he could study for some of those things.
We'll do it with most midterms now. So we're in a situation where, you know, Matt has the midterm go right during the regular school day, no more that, let's get, we just pass, or trying to go in that direction. But I think it's hard to say that just athletics would be affected, because you can say the same thing for music folks, and maybe their kids in other clubs do it, so it's tough. And that's that whole balance piece again.
But that's why you're saying it might only be manageable if you're midterms, because those are scheduled at the beginning of the term. So they're, they're specific. Ongoing exams, obviously, they're difficult.
I play a sport all three seasons, and I've found that there definitely is time in the day to get work done. It may be, golf is probably one of the most time-consuming sports. It's from two-thirty after school, or probably five or six or seven even every night. But even still, I think that there definitely is more time on the day if I don't procrastinate too much. So-
I think you can get yourself down-
If you're gonna have time to procrastinate, we're going for sports, right? You manage your time.
Yeah, but Peter's point is a good one.
It teaches you, I mean, yeah, time management is definitely very valuable.
But again, less for you.
Yeah, and I think that a lot of students, I mean, my, one of my friends decided not to play golf this year because he wanted to focus on school and also getting college work done. And he knew that he just couldn't balance it all, and that's a decision that he made.
Right. But the, every, I mean, I think that when we are thinking about high school in every part of this district, we're trying to think about how different kids learn. And that's why we're thinking about this scaffolding around, how do we help kids learn how to advocate for themselves. So there are people who manage their time exceptionally well. And there, those of us who kind of manage it halfway left. But then there are other kids who really do need a lot of kind of scaffolding around how they do manage their time that way, or that they are not necessarily always going to get it done as quickly as that small, limited amount of time that they have. So I think that really, when we're kind of looking at social-emotional learning, we're also really thinking about, how does every single learner succeed in, in this spectrum? How does, how does every single learner learn with that policy? And what are we doing to address that for each other? So.
So thank you for your comments, that's helpful for us. And so, can somebody email this policy draft to the SCL committee?
Sure.
I think I wanted to, just one last comment about the policy, when I was reading it, is that I do appreciate how much it is focusing on the meaning, making the process meaningful. I think that, you know, as far as we've come as a profession in education around pedagogy, there is still quite a bit of embedded work for work's sake, and the idea of, you know, we all know that we give tests right before vacation because we don't want you to forget about the information over vacation, that's one. And two, you know, we didn't, we didn't pace it out well enough, you know, in our scope and sequence, right? And so, a lot of this traditional, traditional weight piled on. And I think the one thing I do love about Medfield, and I think this policy kind of shows, is that it's paving the road for that understanding of pedagogical shift that I know that Jeff and his team are encouraging quite a bit, at the middle and the high school that they're seeing. And so I think that the idea of homework, what we traditionally see as homework, when we grew up, hopefully, is not the same as it is today, you know. So, let's hope so anyway. But that's what I think that this policy, and I guess, the only last question I have is, how, how would this be communicated to staff, and what kind of problems of practice are you gonna engage in to incorporate this into the process?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think what we're gonna do is, once it's approved and it's time to roll it out, is do it at individual faculty meetings. And, you know, we've had a lot of input from staff. So you had, you know, people in the SCL, and then we had that group over the summer that really went, and got into the weeds with it to, you know, figure out what makes it the most sense educationally for, for kids and for the school. So I think that, you know, everyone's gonna be happy with that policy. So, you know, I think it's, I think we're gonna, you know, roll it out that way, make sure the parents are on board, and, you know, certainly probably do something at supervisory, and we'll try to get it out there as much as we can, so that the word is out there and the expectation is a little bigger.
And it is highly, highly adopted. You had, you kind of set your ways, your homework, some teachers get that and kind of just reissue it here. You know, what's a way to curb that? What's the, you know, maybe some of the standard model, right? How do you want to replace?
Yeah, I mean, the principals were all part of this, and they're, they're ready to work with teachers on top of that.
All right, so, turn that over to the other item.
Yes.
Donations?
So we have three donations I'd like to share with you. You will read those. We have one for the Medfield Theater Program. We have an anonymous $10,000 donation earmarked for a new sound system for Medfield High School. We have Blake Middle School donation of a Life Fitness Lipstick Machine from Kathleen Caprigo, one of our teachers. And we have Memorial School donation of $250, $53 to Memorial Activities Account from Stop &amp; Shop A Plus Rewards Program.
I'm going to accept the donations with gratitude.
Significant gratitude.
Yes.
Now, is that enough to actually replace the sound system, or does the school system have to ship it?
I believe the MMA is also working with that, too. I would say that the parents that made that donation, it was really because their, their children have had such a great experience in the theater program. And then they went to, and they loved the theater program, loved everything about it, and wanted to make sure that they had top-notch sound systems.
Beautiful. So, but my question is, how soon can it get done? So if they donated it, they also have it used?
Right, yeah, I'm not sure of that, so I can check that out.
Just saying, I'm the president currently of the Theater Association of Parents, and we're working closely with the MMA in concert to try and figure out, it's, it won't be just a donation or foundational funds, but we're working together to, because it really is gonna impact a lot of the-
Everybody, yeah.
The music, theater, the town, probably, so.
Music, yeah.
Right.
Before the, the materials are posted, when the redaction copy, you can keep them leaked through if these folks want, and then before we put this, these minutes up-
Okay.
We'll just make sure that that's-
You can do it in?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, just a quick, we do have more time to raise still, so.
Okay, do you know how much it costs?
I don't, I think we're gonna estimate, Jerry, you probably-
So there is an estimate thirty-five. There's some discussion about seeing an itemized quote on it, because for a similar system, we've seen as low as twenty. So, yeah, so it's digital technology, but we haven't seen sort of the full funding of that. So, so there's some discussion on what the final number will be before the final reason begins. But I know that theater and MMA are stand-ready to bring the joy of music and sound. So, is that power enough?
And if you don't mind, a related note, we're in the process of, of getting all the sound, or, I'm sorry, the lighting equipment that we look for the generous donations of, the SPC grant, the PEO grant. So I've been working with our vendor this summer to try to get that ordered. And supposedly, any day, it'll be arriving at our doorstep, and that'll be installed this year as well. So it's really exciting time for, for, you know, the theater and the school.
Opera, where Medfield?
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you. Super. So, any other thoughts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Dale Street Project, we're scheduled to meet with MSBA tomorrow. And this is the initial meeting that they have to go with the enrollment projections that they've had. Including your packet was their enrollment projections, which are actually higher than NSDEX. If you remember, NSDEX only had us at, topping out about 3,000, and MSBA had us at 3,200, actually above the, the, I think, 2004, 2005, 2006, those numbers. They haven't seen above those numbers, they're lower than 3,000. So they'll sit down with us tomorrow, go through all of that, and certainly, the numbers they have sent support what we're looking at, the feasibility of having pre-K, K building in Memorial, and also doing a three, four, five building. But it looks like that three, four, five, based on their projections, is gonna have to be about a 700 student, even more, three, four, five buildings. So it's going to be a big building. But they're, you know, based on their projections, it will certainly fill it very quickly. You know, one of the things Jess and I had talked about, was looking at, just in 2020, kindergarten numbers coming through. You know, those are big kindergarten classes, it's like five or six right in a row. So I have to give them the number was, but it was-
It was 220, it was 218.
Two hundred eighteen.
Was this year's incoming 26.
Right. And they're all over 200 after that. So we're really gonna have-
Despite as much as other people would likely think we are not.
Right. And just, you know, they did take into consideration all of the permits that are out there, in terms of building permits and all that. They, they take everything into consideration. Whereas NSDEX really looks at the Live Bird cohort that are living in town, and MSBA goes even further with that.
How much is MSBA able to consider this kind of very nebulous hospital plan that should be, I mean, it is like the 600-pound gorilla in the room. You literally can't, obviously, in any, I don't, efficiently, or in a true way, really understand how, how that's gonna affect-
I don't know, we're gonna mention that too tomorrow, yeah.
Because that's-
Traditionally, they don't-
Obviously, exceptionally worrisome.
Unless they change their policy, they don't, unless this, unless it's permitted, they don't count it as, you know.
So it's just a unicorn at this point. They can't do it, but it's a, it's a 300 unit unicorn.
Yep. I mean, MSBA is usually much more, I thought conservative than NSDEX.
Totally not.
See this come up. And then you look at, I mean, as I just looked at 20, I don't know if this is because school years or calendar years, or, but they're off by 500 students already for our current enrollment.
So, to your point, Chris, my colleague in Ashland is in the same spot where our elementary school went to the enrollment gate last week, and they were about 200 students light on their enrollment. So they actually, their current enrollment was more than what they were projected. So they were fighting for more space than, and now we have more than what we thought was gonna be there.
Well, but I'm, but they're, when they, for 2018, 2017-
They're 2500.
They're 2,500. You just said we're 26, 31 today, so-
Right, yeah.
Whatever they, you know, whatever they may project, they're gonna be off. You know, what they don't want, and what we don't want, is the building school is too small. It surprises me that on the actual, on the, on the numbers that have been actual, they'd be that far off.
They're off?
Yeah.
They're off.
Which is why we have meetings.
Yeah, that's why we're, we need some more to go through on this. I mean, it's worrisome if that, if they're off that much, and, you know, the 3,200 and 2,000, 27 is 3,500, you know.
Right.
I mean, that's gonna be much. Tim, your experience, are you usually pretty, pretty close, or?
What their projections?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think they're dealing with, like I think I mentioned, in Hopkinton, we had done a school that, in the middle of construction, we had to add four classrooms because they were more conservative than what, and the district kept telling them we think that it's gonna be, it's very similar to us, because they had a major development that wasn't permitted, so they didn't count it. And then, then it got permitted, probably after the, after the, these enrollment projections were concrete. And then, but they did let them extend it, and they were able to do it within the context of that project. But I don't think they, you know, enrollment projections are just inherently speculative. And I don't think that they have any better, you know, handle on it than NSDEX does right there. So. I think it's just a, you know, at some level, you have to put a stake in the sand.
Yeah, I mean, my, my concern is bigger that they're, that they're starting from bad data, if they're looking at 2017 or 2018 as off by.
I mean, that's worth, I mean, you're meeting them tomorrow, that, that obviously shouldn't be pointed out.
Oh, yeah.
There's a hundred difference right there. They do make you, when you do a school, you have to show them how you would expand it. If they got to design into it, expand it, to expand it.
So what they asked us to do for tomorrow was to take the map, the current map of Memorial, the current map of Relaw, and mark it up as a pre-K, K building, you know, one, two, so they could get a sense of what that looks like. And there's, there's plenty of room. We're looking at, with these numbers, we did up, you know, these numbers, and we need all that space. You know, we need all of it, so we can expand to 11 or 12 rooms per grade. But it's, it would allow us at Memorial to do the preschool programs that we, we need and that our parents want. We're currently, we currently have three teachers sharing one classroom preschool this year, because we, because of the full day dinner. So, on different schedules, with three teachers in the same classroom, that that's not happening.
Well, that's gonna really become an issue in two years.
Sure is.
The two eighteen, yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Any other corrections or comments?
Just the, obviously, just the corrections. I mean, they have actuals they could have used. I mean, putting them in, that's a little concern I can make, but they do have the actuals up to, including last year and this year. So, why they're not basing the caps on that is beyond me. So why they're not basing the counts on that is beyond me. But I would obviously, if you're gonna do the project, do the project regardless of how much of MSBA covers, you know. I think for Medfield, Medfield is, I think for Medfield, get as much money out of MSBA as possible.
Have you looked at the historic, the ones before 2018, see whether those match up to history?
Those are based on October 1 actuals.
So these were?
Yeah.
Yeah, gave them to them.
Yes, they sucked out all of the Desi's data.
So then, so the difference is they projected a loss of students towards this year, we had instead a duplex, and so that makes a lot of difference, you know.
The other piece is that we have preschool included in the numbers I gave you, and you look, preschool's not included here. So that makes a difference.
That's obviously, we've become more and more a core part of our, of our mission as a district. It's obvious that we increase that.
We have 50 kids right now who will increase it now, but that could a lot more.
All right, so that makes that a much, I don't feel this.
We're giving updates. Back, we had some deliverables over the summer that we, we sent them. And then we're looking at our next deliverable, I think is October 1, Michael. Is that the final enrollment?
Final enrollment, yeah, so once we meet with the, they'll break, we'll break back to the district and break back to the.
So so far, so good on the deliverables, feedback's been fine from them. We're plugging along with that. I think one of the things that we need to do this fall that we had talked about with the permanent building committee last year is to look at getting the feedback from the community in the fall. So before we start the piece of work, so start to, start to get self-identity network, so we'll take a look at that and we'll try to plan that as well. I sent a couple of information out this night.
Do we want to ask? Oh, wait, sorry, I haven't gotten past the agenda part yet.
Okay.
My apologies.
So just a, just a couple of things, as you know, I'm involved in the police chief search. We had another meeting this past week and we're posting that position very soon. Again, I can't thank Chief Me enough for the work that he did, it was just a pleasure working with him the last five years. And his retirement party was this week as well, last week, and it was, you know, a great time. So just want to thank him and let you know that we're moving along in that search process. We're probably gonna be looking at giving the selectmen a choice, I think right around December. So the process goes on for a bit. Just some, an update, we had the senior crews last week, again, I think that's probably one of the best events that we have as a district. And having it at the beginning of the year is just wonderful, a great time for kids to get together, they're starting the senior year versus the end of the year. And all ready to get out, just a nice bonding for our class and our kids, they were great. And I know I say this all the time, but they've said it to us every year, this is the best high school kids we get. Your kids are Medfield, they all behave, they all say thank you getting on the boat, they all say hi getting on the boat. You know, all those things that, you know, parents teach kids and we try to reinforce, so it was a great time again. And second in a row, we've had fireworks. So the city of Boston is doing welcome back fireworks, the Thursday before Labor Day every year. So they started last year and we will outbook that Thursday night every year because it is awesome. This is a great time.
I have a lot of time to believe that this whole standing party.
So last year.
That was you, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Figured it out.
We were all surprised last year too, both Doc and then his two barges, and they're just sending them off. And so Eric Scott told all the kids that I had specially ordered this, so they believed it for a little bit, like, no, I have no idea. I was just surprised that you guys were. So we're gonna, now that they're gonna do that every year in Boston, you know, the city of Boston, we're gonna make sure we have ours there, you know, that night. So a great time, it was wonderful, and everyone had a good time. And then the last thing I want to share is that we have signed up with Aptity, which is an app development company that will be developing our Medfield Public Schools app. Which will be our number one communication piece going forward. It'll be able to do push notifications to parents, parents will opt into different groups, it's really great. So we had our initial kickoff meeting this afternoon, and they're looking at about a 45 to 60 day development phase. So we hopefully will go live right around Thanksgiving, that's our goal, we'll be pushing. They have a whole marketing team that comes out and helps you with all that, to get people to sign on. But this is the one communication piece, like a bus issue happens, if a parent is signed up, they opt into a bus theme, something happens there, it's a push of a button, they get a notification on their phone. And again, we talked about the fact that the data we look at tells us that 80% or 75% of what parents are reading is on their phone. It's on their iPhone, it's not even Android, Android's a different percentage. But we get that from the blogs that we send out, that we get the data from, so this makes a lot of sense. And the great thing about this app is it's not one of those apps that just redirects you to our website. It develops an entire application so that it's a real live app, you don't have to open and try to read things and direct you to someplace else and sign in. It's none of that nonsense, it's really state of the art, so we're all happy about that.
So they'll have demos and?
Everything.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, so there's a whole marketing group that, we talked with them today too, that as soon as it's developed and we do all the demos, that they will help us get all the information because they want people to sign in. But we'll get everyone, we'll get a lot of people signing. And it also allows us, we try to put things out in the district, so we can do push notifications like we do on Twitter. But we do one push notification and we push Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, whatever we want. And it goes out to the phones through a push notification, but also goes to all the social media too at once. So it's gonna be a really good way for us to get the word out and to continue to promote the business of it, so please do.
I'll enjoy getting snow days from you, Jeff, on Twitter.
You'll still get that.
Yeah, yeah.
You'll still get that. That's all I have, I'm sure.
All righty, any comments on that? Okay, future agenda items, there's intended evaluation and the 2021. And our next meeting is September 17. On CS, Tim.
Well, I'm just going to announce that I'm, next meeting will be my last on the school committee. After whatever it's been 14 years, I think it's time for a newer, presumably younger place to get on the committee. So I don't know, I know there's a process and maybe we'll talk about that next week, I mean, the next meeting. Just wanted to get that out there.
Thank you, Tim. I understand, but I'm sad to hear.
Same.
But Tim will still be on PBC, right?
Yes, yep. I'll be very involved in building, in fact, that's one of the reasons why it's time to, because that'd take a fair bit of time.
I've served with him for a long time, I'll save my comments until it is his last meeting. I'm gonna start writing now.
I've sent a couple, I mean. I spoke to Dr. Marsden briefly before the meeting, I went home to an irate 10th grader. Irate may not be right the right word. But I guess that the students at the high school today or this week have been told that the tradition of freshmen making posters for seniors is, is, has been banned. And I'm sure there may be a pulse reason behind that, and I certainly don't want to weigh in on every decision that Robert makes at the high school. But the kid, the message that I understand the kids are getting is that it's banned because that's hazing. And my concern about that is that hazing is a very significant problem, it's a serious problem. And I think that by suggesting that, something that we all, even taking a step back, and I tried to do this on my way over here, is take a step back and say, is there some way this could be considered as hazing? I think we all think of this as more, much more community building than hazing. I know, you know, last year when it was Rachel's time to make posters for the seniors, she would figure out what their favorite, you know, drinks were, candy were. Inevitably, I'd have to go get 10 o'clock, 9:04. But that's, you know, that's maybe, if anybody was hazed, it was me. But I have real concerns that that's, that the message that kids are getting is that it's banned for, it's because it's hazing. Maybe there was this particular incident that students are not privy to, and I, as just a parent in this circumstance, am not privy to. Maybe there's a bigger policy behind it, but I, it does concern me that, because to me.
The superintendent's not privy to it, apparently?
Yeah, that's just not hazing, and I have concerns about that. I do think, you know, look, I've never been one to sit up here and say some, you know, some great tradition should be carried on just because it's a tradition, that's the last thing I would ever say. But this to me has been a great tradition that my kids have really appreciated. And Rachel has ordered me to get it back in place by the time she's seen it.
But I think to further that, Chris, you know, we're, you know, we're on this SEL mission of building, connecting, being connected to each other. And these freshmen, you know, are, they belong to a group, they feel connected to the high school because of the field hockey. I have a daughter, a freshman, you know, we bought $10 worth of stuff last night, making the posters, the girls are playing today and just crazy irate, and so are the parents.
Yeah.
Oh, what triggered this? So there hasn't been communication where the parents, as you say, the kids were told it's hazing, and that's how they interpreted it. And, but when you look up the definition for hazing, it's, you know, shameful, and, you know, so there's a huge disconnect.
It was actually, I thought, when Rachel was a freshman, I thought it was a great way to get her integrated with the upperclassmen, because she was terrified of seniors. And, you know, of course, now she's not, but, you know, but at the time it won't show. So if we could just figure out what's going on there. Again, look, I don't want to second guess Mr. Parker's decisions at the high school, but I would like to understand better what's going on there, so. I also heard that there's another health issue with the field. Is that not true?
No, I haven't heard.
That's new to you, okay.
Did you guys hear anything?
I didn't hear anything about the field, I heard a rumor about how all the football kids have mono, but I think.
There's a mono, okay. All right, I'd heard it was. There were, there were more specific instructions given on that, but I'll leave that. And then finally, when we talk about, we talked earlier about midterms and finals, and I brought this up to Jeff at the end of midterms, or Dr. Marsden, rather. At the end of finals last year, I think, I think it's great that we set the schedule up so that kids were taking finals, you know, don't have a full day. But if, if you have kids who have to work with parents like mine do, they're pretty much stranded at the high school if they're not of driving age. So I think we need to find a way to either. Yeah, find some transportation for those days, because as I say, I mean, it didn't kill Rachel to walk home that one day in June, although if you looked at her blog, you would think it did. Because that was the day she brought home all of her ceramics. And she, it was a, it was hilarious, she was good, lighthearted about it, but I knew it was, you know, it was, it was an issue in both the winter and the spring. Where she was just stranded there because we were both working, so if we could kind of focus on that, that would be great. That's all I have for the CD.
Great start to this school year so far. I can report that the kindergarten today, first day was wonderful, so bouncing off the walls when she came home today, they're talking, telling me all about it. And Reloc all the same last week, so despite the warm weather. I've heard wonderful things from the elementary programs this summer. And thank you for all the work this summer as well. I'm starting my first start of a school year not in the school district, so that is new for me. And I feel a little bad for all my, because all my friends work in schools, because that's what happens when you're in the schools. You end up being friends with all those people, and that's your only social group, so it's my first time that I haven't experienced it. So I'm glad I'm still, I'll be a part of it someday. Watched Jeff suffer through it.
I have two things, first of all, I really want to commend the Dale Street staff for the overwhelmingly warm welcome that they gave to their kids on the first day of school. They went above and beyond to make sure that every single kid who went to that school felt incredibly special and part of the community. And I, I hope to, this year, continue my desire to go back to school, first grade through 12th. So I will be contacting principals and going into classrooms and shadowing kids at the high school level. Last year I did this with the kindergarten, it was magical and exhausting days. But I'm prepared, I will be able to obviously get through every grade, but that's part of my, my mission, is to make sure that I'm keeping touch with them, so.
Guys, any tidbits, highlights?
Ms. Safer told me to talk about what student council's doing right now. So the freshmen got settled, I, from what I saw, the freshmen got settled in really well. I think that my sister's a freshman and she said that it was like, went perfectly, she found her classes, everyone was helping out. And like the tours and the information sessions and like the game we played that we discovered at a conference, a student council conference. Was, I think, fun for the freshmen to do and like bond before everyone else came into the school. We also made a bulletin board in the lobby, and we'll probably put the student council pictures up there soon. But right now, it's just all the summer pictures that people sent in, so you can go walk over there and like people are, like, just sent in pictures of their friends or like cool sceneries that they went to. The freshmen tailgates this Friday before the football game, and we're starting to plan pep rally and the spirit dance, which is like, I feel like right now is the best time to be in Medfield High School. Because it's really like spirited, everyone's excited, because now sports are starting and people are, I don't know, people are just getting really hyped up and really excited.
Yeah, you just explained the tailgate's a little bit different, I don't know.
Uh, yeah, we couldn't do the freshman dance, so now instead they buy tickets. It's like $12 tickets and you get to go to the tailgate and the cafeteria, and then you can go to the football game and volleyball game if you want. And, and we're gonna have food there, we have a DJ. Yeah, we're like ordering pizza, having drinks, desserts, and they get to just hang out, it's basically a dance, we're making it into a dance. Just before a football game, yeah, it's gonna be fun.
How's the wifi?
Um, right now, the wifi is.
I haven't noticed anything.
I, yeah.
Last year it was really bad in the Chem Hallway and the Foreign Language Hallway, and I have classes in both those hallways this year, and I haven't noticed any lack of connection.
I think it was Friday, it was kind of down, but then somehow it came back up and it was perfectly fine, everything's working fast.
Um, I just, I went to the opening meeting for the staff and I want to thank Jeff in his message to the teachers. He really brought home the significance of our town passing the two overrides, and what a great responsibility that is, and you're not gonna take that lightly. So I want to reiterate our gratitude to the town for passing that significant override. And I look forward to whenever the teachers come and highlight the R and D projects, because there's a lot of difficult work that was done. And the high school, from the parent level, I must say, Chris, you've noticed, it's great to now get the announcements that the kids are hearing. So then, when I ask my children what's going on, nothing, and I'll say, oh, okay, I can see it for myself. And also I heard this nice little thing that happened this past year where recently the grads from last year got notes from various teachers. Like either from elementary school, I've never heard that before, so. So.
I move to Germany.
A second.
Bye.
Bye.